Adrian.
Here.
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 We stand for moment asylum fair followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Jim John.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gene Logan.
How are you today?
I'm good. Thank you so much for doing this for us.
Well, first of all, let us thank you for getting the money from the evil empire that are good. So, thank you for that. Whereas the Head Start and early Head Start programs of Community Action Agency of Sault Land and other local organizations that have charged with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of Young Child, April 16 through the 20th, 2018. And whereas by highlighting the need for high-quality early childhood services for all children and families within Sioux City, these groups are committed to the early care and education system in Sioux City that will ensure every child beginning at birth is healthy and successful. And whereas programs and public policies that support early learning for all our children are crucial to the young children's futures, whereas we must recognize the vital work performed by the early childhood educators, express our gratitude for their important services and support efforts to see that they are properly compensated. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, and half city council, hereby proclaim April 16th to 20th as Week of the Young Child in Sioux City and encourage all our citizens to work to make an investment in the early childhood in Sioux City. Thank you for your great work. Say a few words.
Thank you so much. During the Week of the Young Child, we ask all of the city council members and media dignitaries, other people in the community, if they would come and join us in our Head Start classrooms. You can come in either for breakfast, or you could read a story, or you can have lunch with us. The Early Morning Show, if you are interested in doing that, if you'd contact me, I would really be grateful. Many of our staff are in Des Moines this week. There's a Prevent Child Abuse Conference that they're attending, and so this is also the month to really heighten awareness about child abuse prevention, so we take that very seriously as well. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Before we go to our interview, I need to thank the council for my nice flower pot that Rhonda engineered getting for me for my birthday a little early, so thank you very much. I appreciate it a lot.
We want to see a flower in it, though. I just don't want to see a hat on top of a flower.
It's gonna have to be a red and black flower. I'll do a little research, Matt.
Yeah.
Red and black flower.
That's the mascot, right?
There you go.
All right, we're gonna go move forward and do an interview today with David Hofer, first. David, you wanna come forward, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Environmental Advisory Board?
Hi, yeah. I'm Dave Hofer. I am an associate professor of biology at Barcliff University, where I teach biology and environmental science courses. I hold a PhD in environment and resources for the University of Wisconsin, and this to me is my chance to help get back to the community in terms of my particular expertise.
Thank you for making the application.
Yes.
Impressive resume.
Are you sure that, Alex, you said that Barcliff doesn't have anybody with a doctorate degree? Are you sure that he's legitimate?
I haven't done my research. Check it out, David, I will.
Well, we appreciate it. It sounds like you're more than qualified, so thank you. We'll let you know. How many do we have openings, please?
One opening.
One opening.
But there are two or three at the end of the year. I know it's still a ways away, nine months, but there'll be openings coming up too, so we hope you hang in there tough, no matter what happens.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask, how did you learn to apply? Who contacted you, or how did you find out?
Well, I began to volunteer with a couple of local environmental groups. One of them was the Sierra Club, and so I met Carrie Radloff, who I believe is the current chair, and she said, hey, there's an opening. If this is interesting, interested for you, then go ahead and apply. So that's how I learned about it.
Awesome. Great. Yeah, appreciate it.
And what is the Luss Hills Audubon Society, or what is that?
Sure, it's the very local Sault Land chapter of the state chapter of the National Audubon Society. So it's primarily for, you know, birders, people enthusiastic about birds, but also covers a variety of environmental topics.
Great. Well, yeah, especially for being here two years, I appreciate you getting so involved, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chad Rea.
Go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself, Chad.
Name's Chad Ray. Got four kids here in the community, live on the north side, go to North High, Perry Creek. Didn't know I was following the guy with a PhD for the same position, so my credentials probably not quite that, up to that level, but a little bit behind the reason I wanted to join the advisory board is, first and foremost, you know, I just want to leave the environment better for my four when I pass on, in a little better shape, and at least be able to look in my face and say, hey, I did what I could. And second, professionally, I spend a lot of time, I'm a national sales manager for a company in Yankton, South Dakota, and I call on all the waste solid market industries. So I spend my time with the waste managements, the republics, the waste connections, you know, the guild, high-polling places. Now, it's on the equipment side, and usually, I mean, I've been on roll-off trucks, I've been in dump trucks, I've done it, but usually not these days, but being that same, along those same lines, I want to know and understand their business a little better, what challenges they have. A couple of weeks from now, I'll be spending a week in Vegas at Waste Expo, talking to these guys, and just getting their feedback and trying to be on a professional level, be able to talk to them and to understand their challenges. So, yeah, that's all we got.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
We should mention, before we get started, in that tone, because of that note, what was the number? We only have 60% of our households, or 40?
Yeah, it's not up to 60. It's like 48%.
Forty-eight percent is all we have recycling in our community. Again, we'll remind you, the recycle bins are free, there are no charge for them if you want to recycle, and they'll deliver one to your house.
Is there a delivery charge?
No. Unless you're, the only charge is if you want to pink one, so, but...
And they pick it up the same day as your trash, so it's easy to take both of them out.
Yeah, that's my understanding. It's free.
We didn't used to recycle in our house, and now every week, it's at least a full bin, so we have sometimes hold stuff back for the next week, so it does work. Move on to the consent agenda, which is items three through 14E. You can consider these items to pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a separate vote. If you want to speak on any of these items, or if you want to come up under citizen concerns, please state your name and address so it can be used for the record. Now move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the city council minutes of April 2nd and 3rd, 2018. Four is a motion appointing Amy DeGroot-Hammer to the Museum Board of Trustees for a three-year term. Five is a resolution accepting a donation from the Parks and Rec Foundation for the Cone Park and Pearl Street Park Projects. Six is a resolution dissolving the Cone Park Design and Construction Advisory Committee and rescinding Resolution Number 2007-1019.
Matt, you don't have to come up. I just wish you would pass along our thanks, or at least my thanks as well, for that committee. I know they did an incredible amount of work getting Cone Park up and ready, and I know that, or at least getting and laying the foundation of getting it going, and I know this council's really proud of the work that they did, so, thank you.
Maybe we could give them special recognition when we do our dinner in the fall time.
We're doing away with the committee, we won't invite them.
Yeah, that's right. The committee, we gotta keep the overhead down here, councilman Moore.
Thanks, Matt. Still invite them, Matt. They can be my guests.
Seven's a resolution approving a grant agreement with the state of Iowa for reallocated home security program funds. Eight's a resolution temporarily closing various streets near the Yorkville Building on April 21st for the symphony closing concert. Nine, a resolution authorizing final payment in industrial process technology for the RAS pump discharge emergency pipe repair project. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to L&amp;L Builders for the Art Center Panel Replacement Project. B is a resolution approving a contract to R.H. Mullin for the Longline Softener Replacement Project. I'm gonna abstain on that, because I think I furnished the bond. C is a resolution approving an amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement with DGR for services in connection with the Cook Park Splash Pad Project. I'd like to ask for a separate roll call vote. I know there, I know I shouldn't be this way, but this is a, this is a piece of concrete, and we're gonna spend, I think I figured, over 20 some, 28% for inspection and engineering, which, this is not a roadway, this is not something the degree of difficulty should command this kind of price. And I probably missed it on the last one, but I'm not missing on this one. $47,000 worth of consulting fees on a job that's gonna run $195,000, so that job, will the construction be at 195 or total project?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director.
The construction cost should be 195.
The installation cost at 195. We had about another 110 for the equipment itself, which they put together.
But that has, they're not engineering that equipment.
No, they just put together the bid package.
You're telling them what you want in there, they're doing nothing with that, other than telling you where it's gonna be placed and running the pipeline for it.
Right. The amendment itself is for the verification of CDBG payroll, which was not a part of the original scope, but it got changed as we went on, so they're, the amendment's mostly for that.
To verify, to, on average, I watched the one in Leeds, most three guys there constructing that. And so you've got to fill out a Davis Bacon Wage Report, which is the simplest form in the world. We do them in my office all the time. I mean, for $12,000, I'll review every one of those all year, whatever you got for the whole next year. This is unbelievable. That makes it, make me, makes me even, now even more upset.
We can't do that internally?
Absolutely you can. There's nothing to reviewing that. You've got to send a guy out, and you've got to ask jobs. They come out, they talk to my people, they ask what they're doing, and then they go back, and the next week or so, they look at that payroll and make sure that that matches up, and make sure they're paying the wages, but you never get anybody to come in and say, show us the checks. You just, I have to sign it certified, that I'm under perjury and under penalty. I'm signing that, and it's not a big deal.
I don't know enough about to know what's all involved with the process. I just know that...
Obviously, because that's...
And it was negotiated down from what the original amendment was, was gonna be 15,000, and we...
So are we gonna get another one for watching the project, or they already...
That's already, that's already included.
Well, I'm telling you, if you're paying that kind of money, I'm for sure in voting no. You're gonna be out there how many weeks building this?
It's supposed to be constructed by May 25th.
So they're only gonna look at your wage reports five times, six?
For every, for every contractor and subcontractor.
Yes. There won't be 10 people on that job, ever, the whole job.
Have we done this on other projects?
We have.
Required because of the funding source to verify payroll, because of the CDBG.
CDBG.
We don't normally, like, the Leeds Splash Pad Project, it was funded differently, so it doesn't, it didn't require that process. It's just when CDBG funds are being used, you have to go through this process, and Davis Bacon Wages are used.
But isn't that something we can do?
We'd have to learn how.
Well, you know, Rick Mock knows how. He's done it before.
So, that's something we can take a look at.
How come, I'm just curious, this came up as an amendment, how, they must have known that the CDBG funding requirements were part of it. How come it all wasn't...
Wasn't not originally a part of it? It changed after the fact, after we explored that opportunity, and we wanted to wait until we saw who the contractor was, to see if they have experience with that sort of stuff, to be able to determine what level of effort was needed.
The guy had to check.
So, I mean, is it possible to defer on this and to ask Rick if he has experience?
I would, I would vote yes or no, and if you vote no, then we'll explore doing it in our own in-house. I wouldn't defer it.
Well, to see if we could do it in-house, Matt, is what we're thinking.
Yeah, we'll either do it in-house, or we won't. We could figure, if we can figure out how to do it in-house, we will. If Rick has got experience with that, or others have experience with it, we'll figure it out. Just gonna take...
Well, because what I'm saying, instead of voting up or down, I'd rather have us defer it and explore...
Do that, too.
Explore that option, so that we're not voting it down, and then saying what you have to do.
The only downside would be a two-week deferral.
And I know you want to get moving.
We're not meeting on the 16th.
Yeah.
That's all they're doing, is looking at those wage reports.
The other one, the other part of the amendment was for just creating a separate bid package for the equipment, since we did not do the equipment and installation together, so we could get the equipment in a more timely manner. So about $3,000 of that was for the separate bid package.
Wow.
So when they talk about CDBG funding requirements, daily observation and project documentation, somebody comes out every single day and they file some kind of report?
No.
No, just when, around the time when people are getting paid.
Wages are paid.
It works like this, Pete, you've got, one of their field people, that's probably doing the inspection, that's already there, will go around and write in his book the name of the employee, what's your job description, and what are you making? So then, at the end of the week, I've got to send out and sign a deal that I certify this is correct, and so then they get that, the engineering firm gets that, looks at what their book says, who was on the job. If somebody's not on these payroll reports, they have to find out why, and they have to verify that they actually got paid, what they said they got paid on that report. It's not...
Is that just for CDBG?
Yeah, if we didn't have CDBG funds on this, we would not be bringing this forward. It would just be for the $3,000 on the separate bid package, and we would have done that a long time ago.
And how often do we, do we use those funds?
It's funding the installation and equipment on the entire project.
But I mean, do we, do we use these funds regular?
Only where you qualify. Cook just happened to qualify.
How much of a delay, if we do defer it for that two weeks, how much does it delay your project?
They're gonna continue to work. It's not gonna delay it at all, it's just whether or not...
Because the money's already granted.
Yeah, the contract is out there, they're working on it, they've started, it's just they'd have to go back and verify some records.
And I don't know enough about that. Mayor, is that possible? Is that something...
Well, yeah, they have to, every week, the contractor's turning those reports into somebody.
So, but then someone...
Ultimately, they better be part of the city file, because the city's responsible for making sure that that's the case.
We're gonna have to do all the pay applications, yeah.
And not just on this project, I'd like to see if overall the city can handle that internally. I mean, so we're consistent with what we're doing, and then...
What other projects?
Then, yeah, then you'd know, and the other departments...
Well, if we have that many projects, how can we afford to, we're gonna have to hire somebody else to do it.
It's typically projects that Neighborhood Services would be working on.
If we could confirm that, we could...
Because that's the funding source.
And it won't matter?
Yeah.
When you do those walls up there in the Grandview Boulevard and that, they have to certify.
So why wouldn't they be doing it now? Certifying?
I'll just vote no, and the rest of you can vote for it. I'm just not voting for it.
Good, attorney.
For, you know, for ours, typically, we already know ahead of time, so we don't, they don't separate out what they're charging us to do their wage rate interviews, it's just part of their inspection.
Exactly, because it's normally in there.
Yeah, so I mean, I agree with you, I think it's an exorbitant amount for $9,000 to do wage rate interviews, or it's almost $10,000, $9,800 for wage rate interviews, if that's all that, unfortunately, we didn't, I didn't see this RCA, so I can't.
I'm right on how they, for the process, the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we deal with it quite often, so I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's just verifying that the employer's doctoring his forms.
Well, you know, to be fair, Matt wasn't aware of that, so...
So Dave, if we, if they vote no, this is something we can figure out internally, or how do we recommend doing it?
Yeah, we can, we can work with our inspection staff to do it. I mean, there'll be a charge back to your project.
I know, so it's, it probably, it might be, if Finch hearing does it, it might be a wash.
There'll be a departmental charge back inside.
That might be worse.
Might be.
Typically do it through the consultant or the engineer.
The engineer's shaking his head. Maybe we leave it to the outside guy.
Well, a two-week delay won't bother anything?
No, they'll just have to verify the records after the, after the fact.
Or, we can, we can provide someone to do wage interviews.
Or can we just amend this to, to delete the amendment itself, and just to, like, I guess everything, the package is already...
But then if Rick says he can't do it, and Engineering says it would be the same cost?
The council could delete the item.
Engineering cannot charge, even with their exorbitant fees, could never get $9,000 out of that job. Never. Even, even when I've seen some of your charges, you can't, you guys can't even get there.
If you deleted the item, we would just bring back the $3,001, the $3,000 amendment later.
Right, you could delete this amendment number one, and staff could bring back a revised amendment number one to add that piece on instead. Instead of deferring it, they could bring it back clean, with the council's direction to remove that portion.
Okay.
I would move to delete that, that portion.
Delete, for deletion of the item.
Of item one?
Right, and then they can resubmit it with the revised amendment number one.
The whole item.
The whole item, 10C.
The whole item would come back.
With the change, no?
With the change, yes.
I'll second that.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye. Aye.
D is a resolution approving a procurement contract with Swig BioSet for the asset renewal Phase 1 dewatering and odor control procurement project. E is a resolution approving a procurement contract with R.D. Pedrote for the asset renewal Phase 1 dewatering and odor control procurement project. F is a resolution approving procurement contract with Evaqua Water Technologies for Asset Renewal Phase 1 Dewatering and Odor Control Project. G is a resolution awarding a contract to Knife River for the Morningside Avenue Reconstruction Project.
Dave, I just want to ask a question about that one. We got it worked out as far as the number of days and everything, I'm just nervous.
With the parade and everything?
Huh? No, 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 not with that. I'm talking about the whole debacle with Glen Avenue and the number of days, but I wanted to make sure with this project, same contractor, that we have it narrowed down a lot more, so that it's not gonna sit on being unintended.
We're tighter on our days. If it sits, they should be getting charge damages.
That's what I would like to hear, Dave. Thank you.
H is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with HGM Associates for the 2018 repair and repairs in 46th Street Bridge Overlay Project. I is a resolution approving a contract to HCI Construction for the City Fuel Island Project. J is a resolution approving a contract and performance bond with HCI Construction for the Tyson Event Center Wheelchair Ramp Replacement Project. K is a resolution approving a limited track and land use agreement with aggregate trading proportions of the city-owned rail yard and adjacent property on Alicia Avenue in the South Bridge Park, South Bridge Business Club. L is a resolution granting a permit to Fiber Con to own, operate, and maintain underground cable near Jackson, Nebraska, and Pierce Streets.
I had a question about that one, and I don't know, Gordon, if it's for you, or anyone, or, yeah, just anyone. These different underground cables that we're putting through, whenever we do repairs or anything like that, do we have to worry about the replacement of those? Is that on our dime, or anything if that gets tore up?
No, not to replace theirs, but they, we have them mark them, so we don't hit them.
Okay.
That's, that's what you mean, when we, when we excavate?
Basically, yeah, exactly. I just wanted to know if we do any reconstruction in those areas, or anything if that, if that's affected, but yeah, I suppose you would mark it and just miss that?
Right, that's, whenever we do any kind of reconstruction project, we have them, they're supposed to mark them, so that they don't get hit.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, guys.
I love our actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the land and the combined Floyd, it should read River Urban Renewal Area, accepting the proposal of Sault Land Expo Center and scheduling a hearing of the property in the 700 block of South Lafayette Street. So do we need to amend that?
Yes.
I'll move the amendment to add River. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
B is a resolution accepting an offer of sale in the Sault Land Community Christian School for Property in conjunction, connection with the Garrettson Street Realignment Project property at 6,000 Gordon Drive. Twelve are approved total checks issued for the reporting period March 2018 in the amount of $8,585,206.79. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor. I see the list, if you come forward, if you have any questions. And fourteen, recede them, and see if those come forward, if you have any questions. Anybody to be heard on any of those items?
Mayor, I'm gonna abstain on 13A, 1, and 13, 2A.
13A and Hard Rock, and what else?
1A, 1.
County.
The county. All right. Thanks.
Passes 5, 015, is a hearing resolution determining the area the city to be blighted and an economic development area designated as an urban renewal project and adopting amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Teton Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes 5, 016, is a hearing resolution determining the area of the city to be blighted and an economic development area design, designating it as an urban renewal project and adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that.
Second.
Plan's not lit up.
Not lit up.
Neither, none of them are.
All right, start it over.
Ghostwriter.
Okay.
Oh, there they are.
How's that?
Be careful.
Everybody else has got to re-vote.
Yeah, re-vote if you already did it.
Everybody's got to re-vote.
Okay.
Get it?
Got it.
There we go, thank you.
Passes 5, 017, is a hearing resolution determining area of the city to be blighted and an economic development area, designating it as an urban renewal project and adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the amended Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that.
Second.
Are you lit up? No, it's not, now it is.
Passes 5, 018, is a hearing resolution determining an area of the city to be blighted and an economic development area designated as an urban renewal project and adopting the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes 5, 019, is a resolution approving advances of funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Increase Revenue Funds and directing the filing of certification. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes 5, 020, is a resolution scheduling a meeting on the issuance of not to exceed Passes five zero twenty, is a resolution scheduling a meeting on the issuance of not to exceed fifteen million five hundred thousand dollars with the GEO urban renewal bonds. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero twenty-one, is a resolution scheduling a meeting on the issuance of not to exceed seven million dollars with the GEO urban renewal bonds. Move it.
Second.
Passes five zero twenty-two, is a resolution amending resolution twenty seventeen dash six oh eight three regarding the demolition and declaration of the structure to be dangerous and dilapidated property of thirteen oh five Jennings Street. Owner, Doc Min Nguyen.
Darrell Ballack, Code Enforcement Manager. This property has recently been sold. The new owner is listed there. He has provided us with documentation and a ten thousand dollar cashier's check, and staff would support a ninety-day stay of demolition.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Phil.
Damn it.
Got it?
They keep it coming on.
Passes five zero twenty-three, is a resolution awarding a three-year service provider agreement first-class security for the Skywalk Security Services. Somebody will need to make a motion on that.
I actually, I mean, I'll move it, but I just had a question about it, if we could.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Can we talk a little bit about the, why they were chosen? I mean, it said that there was some criteria. Can you analyze or explain that a little bit, if at all possible?
Um, everybody reviewed all our, well, we had a committee that included Sergeant Manthorn from the Police Department, myself, Mark Grinders, our.
Chair.
Chair. Pat Rosacker, who is also a member of our board, and we had responsiveness, RFP, ability to perform required services fees, and quality of the RFP as far as thoroughness and such. Those were some of the criteria that we used. And then, um, at our last board meeting, we also interviewed or had a question, question and answer session with the three lowest bidders.
And it was from that discussion that you determined to vote unanimously for them, or?
Yes.
I just noticed they're not the lowest bidder, so I'm trying to understand, you know?
We've used first-class security before. Actually, they were the contractor before Permar was. They do a great job in the Skywalk system. Their guards look professional. Anytime I have any issues, the issues are always addressed. I, I don't have any doubt that they could do the job and a great job at that again. Also, one of the big things for me is local, there being somebody local to oversee this project, if that's what you want to call it. Our last contractor, the supervisor was basically in Omaha, and whenever we had any issues, very seldom were they addressed appropriately.
Okay.
What about the second bidder?
Um, Securitas, they, they could have, they could do, do the job also. Um, there wasn't really too much of a defining factor other, other than their supervisor was going to be based in Omaha also.
How is that when they have so many, they do a lot of work up in this area?
They, and they've been part of the, they've done the Skywalk Security too before. It was before I was part of the Parking and Skywalk Division.
Well, it seems to me that first class has proven theirself, and so I don't have a problem with going with them. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes you get what you pay for, so, um, if you've had a good experience with them, and, and they're there when you need them. I, I mean, I'm sure that there's times where things are happening in the Skywalk that you need to have, if, if they've left, you need to have them come back and unlock, and if, if there's not someone around to do that, uh, you have somebody stuck inside that Skywalk until the next morning.
Well, and that, and that really shouldn't happen if the guards are doing their jobs.
Exactly.
Um, that happened once, and I was four hundred and fifty miles away, and it, it was a couple-hour ordeal.
Yeah, and, and it shouldn't have to be that way. I mean, that's why they have a contract.
Right, and the last time that we had first class, if that ever happened, I never heard about it. I didn't get the call, I didn't hear from the comm center. Um, I don't think that it ever happened. I think I probably would have heard that from first class themselves, but it never was an issue before.
For me, one of the biggest things too is just reducing the stigma. I think, I think there is somewhat a stigma that the Skywalks are unsafe, or that there's a lot of transients, and, and I understand that there is, and I want to do whatever we can to combat that, because I think that, uh, future use of the Skywalk system is going to be really important, especially when we're looking at new development downtown. I think that, um, the utilization of that will be really good. Uh, we just need to make sure that this, this company, if we go with them, are as proactive in just reducing that stigma as much as possible. I think that's something that's really important for me. If we're going to pay all this money for something, I want to make sure that we're getting that return on investment, that people are utilizing, if they're not scared to use it, things like that.
I agree, and, and the fact of the matter is also, we're going to have more students in there too, you know, and, and.
Oh, yeah, using the museum.
Yeah, and, as an adult, you know, you may have run into one of those situations before, but when you've got a lot of young adults in there, kids, they're not used to dealing with transients on a daily basis. And it's not that we can have a security guard stationed at where the Career Academy is going to be, but if their presence is known in there, I think it will help a lot.
And do they set forth an, like, I don't even, I don't know anything about what they pitch to you, so to speak. Do they have ideas of what they want to do, or kind of an annual report, or like an overview of, hey, these, these are the benchmarks we want to be held to, this is what we anticipate, this is how we're going to be proactive? Is that part of a conversation at all?
It is part of a conversation. Um, they also show up, um, the owner of the company, Mike Carlson, is here, and Dave Bronger, who will oversee this contract, they're both here. Dave, in the past, has shown up at every one of our Parking and Skywalk Board meetings, so he updates the board on what is going on, if there have been any issues that he knows of, if there's any resources that he needs additionally from us. Um, it's a good working arrangement.
Good. I just want it to be as proactive as possible and not reactive. If there was an incident, someone goes. It's how can, especially with the example of the schoolchildren, how can we be more proactive, you understand? That's kind of what I'm just worried about and want to make sure we're addressing, so that there isn't an incident, and then you're just, I don't know, further, I don't know, solidifying the stigma, you know what I mean?
Sure, well, and, and, you know, nobody can guarantee that there aren't going to be any incidents, and especially, especially in the wintertime, when it's colder and it brings, um, they do what they can to be around. I mean, to make, to make around, usually it's divided east and west side, so usually we've got a guard that's, um, patrolling the east side of the Skywalk and a guard patrolling the west side of the Skywalk. So they can't be everywhere at the same time, but it should only take about thirty minutes for them to casually walk through their portion of the Skywalk, so. Also, we will make sure that, that, um, first class will update the phone numbers, and we'll have, um, stickers on the doors in case anybody needs to call for anything right away, and that phone will be answered by a person and not by a call center, which.
Which has been an experience in the past, or?
Well, it's, yes, it's happened in the past, which during one of the times when someone was locked in there overnight, somebody left a shift and didn't tell the next person, and, um, it shouldn't have happened.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
You're welcome.
I'm just really bothered, I think we locked in on them, which is fine, but I'm bothered that we don't know more about the second bidder. That, that bothers me a little bit. Did we interview them?
Yeah, we did. They were part of the interview process.
And, and.
She said you interviewed the bottom three, right?
Yes.
Three lowest bidders?
Yes.
I don't know how they do the kind of volume they do around here, because they do, I think, like Great West and that, don't they?
Uh, I think they do, what is the, um, they do one in Nor, Nor Sue.
Do more than one, because I do the tax, people's tax returns, and they.
I don't remember if it was the Cookie Factory or the Dog Food Place.
Do, um, in, in, in the RCA, you, you talk about, uh, we are recommending the first-class security be awarded a contract based upon their complete proposal. Did the others have proposals like the copy of the one we received, the hard copy? Did they?
Yes.
Because I noticed in here, they talk about a number of categories, and we were talking about reports, reports, procedures, knowledge appearance, cleanliness, attitude. They want to get on board electronically and file reports. Do they attend your annual, are there monthly meetings?
Yes.
So, and you would have access to their reports?
I will get, um, daily reports, if that's how I want them. Um, I could get them weekly, or I could get, they have incident reports also, which in case an incident happens in the Skywalk, I'm notified of that. Um, I get, uh, numbers of police reports if a police report has been filed, so I have access to all of that information.
I spoke to Manette this afternoon on the phone after I had reviewed all of the information again, and, and we, in our discussion, we talked about the one time, or maybe more than one, that people have been locked in, uh, the Skywalk at night, and there, and that there are different keys for every, uh, doorway. Uh, one of the things I would recommend, and I mentioned this to Manette, but if it's possible and you can work it in, not work it in, I'm not sure, but I would get a ring, an extra ring of keys, and I'd make sure the police department had it, and it just takes a nine-one-one call or routine call to them, and somebody can pick up the keys, be down there and get them out in no time.
Yeah, why do you have all those keys? Anybody that has lot, multiple buildings goes with a master key. You have one that opens them all.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we've got, and I'm not sure.
You can lock them differently, but you, then you can have a master key that's good for every lock.
Well, and what we have got is, sometimes there's individual keys into businesses, but, um, we've got like a set of keys for east and a set of keys for west, Skywalk sections.
I don't understand why, but okay.
Well, I don't, I don't know why.
There's a master key. Is Stan still here? Nope.
We can talk to Stan and see if we can.
But, yeah, that's.
That would be a lot easier.
But I, I like your idea, Pete. That way I won't be up at four in the morning.
Yeah, it saves, and it, and it's really quick response too, so.
I, I do have one question. How come first class didn't, lost, why'd they lose the contract in the first place?
Previously, the way it, um, this contract worked and some of the other ones in the Skywalk system were, it was bid through purchasing, so whoever was the low bidder, unless there were some other kind of circumstances, was automatically, pretty much automatically awarded the contract. And this time, we decided to go with a request for proposal so that cost wasn't the only factor.
And, and I don't think anyone on the board would disagree that Securitas, I think, would be capable of doing, they just elected to go with first class. I don't think anyone was, and I, and I think one of the overriding factors was their local presence. I, I don't think if, if, if the council so choose that they wanted to award the Securitas that there would be, um, from the Skywalk.
I'm all for awarding for, for local. I, I think we should if we can, and I know it's going to cost us a little bit more money, but at least we got them here in town. And, and, to me, that's a huge deal. I mean, if you need somebody, you're not calling to Omaha, and it's going to take them two hours to get up here, or longer, so. And they've been around before, and you guys have dealt with them, obviously, so, uh, I, I'd feel comfortable with these, with first class.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think that's why you put together a group, make a decision, and put together a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Manette.
Anybody, did you ask for any public?
Anybody in the public want to be heard? It passes three zero, three one one. I vote no. I had a couple calls from people, then they don't, nothing against your service, but they don't feel like the security's going to be good no matter what, and they're just paying extra for it, and, uh, I got to honor that feeling, because I'm not been overly impressed with the security in our Skywalk system. When I'm not comfortable going in them, not a good sign. I hope that they meet the, meet the criteria and do it good. Citizen concerns. Any citizen that wants to be heard, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Keith, K.E.I.T.H., Baker, B.A.K.E.R., twenty-one oh one Nash, Sioux City. I've got a couple things. Something's been bothering me, Mr. Scott. Was it two years ago in that area, when there was a discussion on the sewer rate increase and the garbage collection? I questioned it, and I brought up the issue, why don't the city freeze the rates on disabled or senior citizens? Because you know who we all are. We're all in the system. We get that discount every month. You sent me a personal check to pay for one-month increase. Am I correct?
That was for a year, but anyway, one month, maybe.
Why didn't you send one to everybody?
I don't know.
That bothers me. That's, is it very ethical, is it? I, I.
No, I, I didn't know anybody yet. I sent it to you. It has nothing to do with ethics.
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
I brought it back to you. I brought it back to you.
Yeah, that's right.
The second thing is, I'm going down to Woodhouse tomorrow, buy a new pickup. I'm going to sign a purchase agreement. In two days, they're going to let me know how much that pickup's going to cost me. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else be heard? Council concerns?
I have none, Mayor.
Um, no, I'm good.
Let's see, I'm sure I can find some, right?
I'm sure you can.
Exactly, so let's see.
Huge disappointment if you didn't.
Exactly, so, um, a couple of things that I see on my calendar for sure. Uh, this Wednesday will be the Sioux City Growth Organization, the general meeting, so if there are any young professionals in your organization, or they're looking to maybe get involved, to meet a restriction or anything like that, I would just encourage you, if you're looking at getting engaged in the community, want to make a difference, that's a great way to do it. That is, uh, at, from noon to one, they usually have a speaker, um, but it's at the United Way Building there on seven oh one Steuben Street. So please encourage your young professionals in your organization to, to attend that. Then, let's see, there's also, does anyone have more information on the, isn't it the, that, is it Wednesday night?
Tolerance Week.
No, the event at, at the Orpheum.
Yes, that's all part of tolerance week.
Dinner and then performance.
Correct.
Five thirty.
Can anyone speak to that? I'd.
Five thirty dinner, and then the seven, I think it's seven thirty.
Seven thirty, yeah.
And the performance, and I believe.
Is it from the Sanford Center, that one, or no?
That might tell you a little bit more about. Did you sign up?
Mm-hmm.
I think we're all signed up.
Perfect, yeah, yeah, well, I, I think it's open to the public, if they can, so.
It is, I believe so. Not the dinner. The performance.
Not the dinner, yeah.
Do they know who the performance team they can go to?
Well.
I just had it on my calendar, so I was just.
Who do you mean, who they go to?
To get tickets.
Probably just, no, it's, it's open, the seven thirty performance is open to the public.
It is, and it's free.
Well, then I hope to see.
It's host, it's.
Yeah, just show up at seven thirty.
Perfect, show up at seven thirty.
It's hosted by Jerry and Kathy Weinberg, or.
Weiner.
Weiner, and it says, I am a star, the songs and poems of Inga Arabacher.
Yep.
Um, presented by, uh, Therese, Camp Holy Cross Survivor, Inga, again, hosted again by Jerry and Kathy Weiner. And, uh, seven thirty is, uh, is curtain up at seven thirty.
It's a very good program. She's very interesting, so.
Well, it's a, it's, it's one of the best educational opportunities we have, not only for the, uh, adults, but for students, because they'll be going to the performances during this week.
Perfect, and then the last thing that I would say, since we will not have a meeting next week, uh, the twenty-first is Litter Dash, so hopefully you, you as an individual or your company has signed up to form a team, and if you haven't, but you still want to get involved, please, who do they contact? Reagan?
Melissa.
Melissa.
Campbell.
Melissa Campbell, so if you please contact that, there's tons of information on our website, as well as the, uh, Facebook page, but obviously, we've all discussed it, and I know we discussed it in the joint meeting, uh, but there's a lot to do as far as litter in our community, and we want to have community partners as well as citizens to step up to the plate, so if you miss the registration deadline, please contact Melissa or reach out on Facebook, and we'll get you set up with a team.
What's the date of that again?
Isn't it the twenty-first?
Is that a Saturday?
Yes.
You guys should be back.
It's Saturday, the twenty-first, right?
Litter Dash?
Yeah.
Is Friday, the twentieth?
That too. Back to you.
You should be back, Jean.
I lost, well, no, we get back on Friday, but, but I've lost a couple of people because it was on Friday. Didn't it used to be on Saturdays?
I thought it was Saturday.
No, it's been on Friday. Um, there is a lunch usually at noon at the Long Lines Family Rec Center and then the teams go out after that on a Friday. Some groups that clean up parks and things like that on a normal basis will go out on a Saturday because it works better for their members. We would encourage that as well, just to know that there is a lunch available on Friday.
Because Sioux City Go was on on Saturday, that's right.
Yep, for their area. So whatever's more convenient.
That's what we've gone out on them a Saturday.
Yes.
And I bought you lunch.
Thank you for the info, Reagan.
Yes, I'm sure that's the case.
Sorry I had the-
I want to make sure the mayor heard that.
At Long Lines, it was free.
Wow, that must've been a cheap one.
Well, wait till, wait till he tells you what he found when he was collecting, picking up litter.
And from his wife.
My telecoil wasn't working and tell, so I missed the, the citizen's input. Am I too late?
As long as you state your name and address, even though you're so famous, everyone knows, could you at least do that for us?
Okay, I'm George Bush and, no. Dick Salem, seven-hundred Pierce Street, Sioux City. Um, well, you know, I've, um, come across something else that I think that maybe I'd like to see the council or somebody look into. I'm working with a, uh, a Mexican restaurant owner out of Omaha. He has two restaurants. He's looking to put another one in Sioux City and Su- and Sioux Falls. Uh, so he goes to the, uh, um-
Ansel System, probably.
System, you know, like, what is it? I lost the, the term. Cleanout, you know, a cleanout. Fifty-one thousand dollars. And he's gonna, he wants to put it next to the entrance to the Francis Building and, uh, in that, uh, forty thousand, four thousand square foot space. And, you know, fifty-one thousand. So he, he checked with the, uh, the, the supplier and, you know, he said, the supplier told him that no other city requires around here, South Sioux, Norrisu, uh, Sioux Falls, uh, does not require the, the extent, obviously, they all require a hood and a, um, a cleanout, but not to the extent that Sioux City does. And this is, you know, this kind of goes along with, with the, the building codes and so forth. I think we, and we're beginning, we've, we've become known as the can't-do city because it's, it's so onerous to do, to do anything and to do a development for maz and paws. Now, maybe a large corporation, you know, they can handle that kind of stuff, but, uh, I just, I just thought I would bring this up and I, I think we need to reevaluate, you know, the, uh, the requirements that we have that go way in above, uh, not only these outside cities, but also even the state of Iowa, the, the requirements. So that's all I just wanted to-
The most of it, the hood or is it that new drainage thing we have to have?
Well, it's, a lot of it is the hood.
The hood.
Yeah. I mean, for instance, let me give you, well, and what brings, that brings to mind, um, we've leased, uh, Gudenfree is going to go out on Floyd Boulevard. They're, they're closing up at the end of this month. And, um, so he was going to, um, sell the, um, the hood and, uh, he, he just put it in a, a two years, less than two years ago. And now it doesn't qualify. Uh, it was a, it was twenty thousand dollars, twenty some thou- twenty thousand, some thousand dollar hood. You know, that's just an example of how we keep increasing the, the requirements, not only in the building codes, but also in this kind of a thing too as well. And I, and I think it's just, I don't know, if people just sit around and, and think, well, we need to do this, we need to add this and this and this and make it more strenuous, make it more, uh, difficult and, and expensive to develop and whatever. I, I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not that, um, smart or privy to the information, but all I can tell you is when I get feedback from, from the customers and from, uh, and from other developers. And, and they're, they're saying the same thing that I have come to you and to within the past. It's just, it is just really difficult to do business with Sioux City. So-
I'm surprised that, I saw a new nail place up there on, uh, by Bomb Cars and that strip mall. And I know what these guys went through to put a nail joint out there on Floyd Boulevard, which was unbelievable to me. So I'm surprised that they could get one up on Hamilton without thousands and thousands of dollars because our building code makes you move that air through there so much. You know the problem, you had a- and I cannot imagine in a little restaurant that you've got fifty-one thousand dollars worth of hood and drains, guys. That's amazing to me. We have to, I'm not saying we're not, we can deviate from the building codes necessarily, but we seem to interpret that building code a lot differently than other communities do. Because nobody's going to go, you, I mean, even a Taco John's, I would think, would have to think about a fifty-one thousand dollar hood. And they, they build them all over the place.
Well, I, I, I certainly don't think that, uh, inspection services or anybody, uh, is sitting around thinking about ways to make it more difficult for businesses to come to Sioux City.
Are they sitting around thinking about ways that we can still meet the building code?
And stimulate growth.
And stimulate growth. Because I remember Paul Bronger had a problem up on, uh-
Hamilton.
On Hamilton. It was like two and a half inches. And they were going to make him spend twenty-one thousand on a wall. And I said to Henry, now wait a minute. If you're, alls you're asking for is double sheet rock. Why can't he put double sheet rock?
Better, a better, better one than that.
If you really looked at it.
A better one than that, uh, the, uh, Insurance Exchange Building that our office is in, had put a stair, a, a fire escape along, all the way up six stories, two hundred thousand dollars. And when it came down to the last step was off less than an inch and they made him redo it. I mean, that's just completely, we were up on, on, in fact, in Lakeport View are the townhomes that we developed. Uh, you know, we get all done with the landscaping and everything and this, and they come back and say, look, you were one, one foot, the, the build, the, the building front yard is one foot lower than it has to be and you have to build that up. I mean, it, it's, it's, you know, okay, I'm sorry, they missed it by one foot, but it, but anyway, those, those are just, it goes on and on and on. I mean, I've, in the last two or three years, it's, you know, I've, yes, I've just because I've been doing, uh, things I've never done before or haven't done for years and years and years. It's, it's just been very discouraging, very discouraging.
Well, I think we should take those things in and sit down with the appropriate department and ask the questions.
Feel free.
I was going to say, because that's what I've said to you before, Dick, and I've even said it to Jim Johnson and others, because I've heard that from developers that are frustrated with some of that stuff. And having it not be my forte, what I would say is if we can start writing some of those things down and saying, this is the code and what we're running into, this is what other communities are doing and why we're hitting brick walls, then I say, then, just to Pete's point, then we go before that department, we say, why is this this way? What is your justification?
The problem we have is contractors are afraid to do that because they feel like it'll be piled on them the next time.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, and that's, that's, that's true. That's very true.
Yeah, but can't, shouldn't we be able to clarify?
Call Billy Falk. I'm not going to give you any examples of what he said on a project, but he was complaining to me and, but he's afraid to say anything because it may, may in the future work against him. And Billy Falk's been around longer than anybody else doing that kind of work. He can tell you what he, his frustrations are, I guarantee, if he wants to.
Well, I hear from quite a few contractors, the same thing the mayor's talking about.
Well, maybe we should have a study session and, and allow people to share their views and discuss it with city. I'm with you, Dick. I don't want to make it any more challenging than it may be. We want to, uh, encourage economic development, but I gotta believe there's something that they're able to articulate.
I'll give you an example. I quit going to their meetings, but I sat in there one time and the Casey's guy, how many they rebuild a year? Fifty to seventy-five. And they have a set of plans that they use about everywhere. And Henry's response was, and I'm not picking on Henry because nobody in that room disagreed with him, by the way, so it's the whole room, it's not just Henry, said, we'll try to get back. And then this guy said, now listen, we only have money for twenty-five of these fifty remodels. So the first twenty-five cities that approve are going to get the remodels.
Yep.
Henry said, we'll try to get back to you in six to eight weeks. Now, I'm telling you, no other city would tell you six to eight weeks on a simple Casey's addition that they do fifty a year. I mean, their plans, they pretty much know what they're doing and they pretty much know what the National Building Code is. And so it's, it's frustrating. It, you know, are they overworked down there? I don't know. Do they, do they over, overanalyze? I don't know the answer, but I'm just telling you.
This, this goes back, goes back a long ways. You get people, some of you remember Sambo's? Sambo's came in here, they've been building restaurants all over the country. They came to Sioux City and Sioux Falls at the same time. The Sambo's was up and running and opening before they even got a building permit in Sioux City. So this is not new. You know, I've been here seventy-eight years. I've been in business and, and doing things in, uh, economic, you know, developing and so forth for forty-eight years. And I love this city. It's, it's my town. I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't want to badmouth it. I don't want to hear other people badmouth it, but it's happening. And I think we, I just wanted you to know that and be, be aware that there's, instead of the silent, that, you know, somebody, they're going to come back on me and, you know, if I say something.
Maybe there's, this is a bad comparison, Dick, but, um, when I was with the police department for nearly four decades, I would hear stories all of the time that they called, they reported, they did this, or they didn't respond, or we didn't do something. And every, there was none. There was never a phone call in the first place, which leads me to believe that people aren't reporting. I would encourage people all the time to report. I'm curious, did, had, do you know any of the incidents we've just talked about? Has anybody ever talked or spoken to Daryl Bullock about it? I, I refuse to believe that Daryl wouldn't sit down and want to address the issue because I do believe that he would. And I would think we would all want-
Let's get an answer on this one.
Yes, I agree.
I want to hear it because if it takes fifty-one thousand dollars to open a small Hispanic restaurant in this community for a hood, then we're doing something really wrong.
I, I-
Something is not-
I tend to agree. I, I say we take this as, the information you brought as, and, and sit down with people and try to resolve the issue.
I, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, because your client, Dick, your client, Dick, Dick, your client's not opposed to a hood.
No, he wants to go there.
The disconnect is between what type of hood it is and he, and he's going into a place that's formerly been a restaurant?
He just couldn't believe it's fifty-one thousand. He said, I don't know if I can, I, I would even want to do it now.
No, it, you're, Dick, yeah, you're talking next to the Francis Building? No, I don't think, you know, years ago, but, but I think the, is there a bank building there? No.
No, it's Francis. It's, there used to be a, Telly Harvey used to be in there.
Oh, yeah, there was not a restaurant.
So what was in there?
It was not a restaurant.
I think you're a block off, Pete. You're a block off. Uh-
This is Fifth Street or Sixth Street?
You're in the, uh, uh-
The opposite side of the building where Dean Drug used to be.
Oh, okay, that's Fifth Street then, right?
Yeah, where Heritage, Heritage Bank is now on, on the corner, then the entrance, and then this would be the next.
Okay.
You could help us a lot if we, if we could see a breakdown of that fifty-one thousand dollars. I think that would be very telling.
Well, Brad Cummings owns the building and he's been, been working with it. And he's the one that, that, you know, uh, with the guy. And because he owns the building and we've signed, we've signed a lease subject to him reviewing the, uh, the costs. And, uh, you know, I really think that it would be great to have another restaurant downtown. Uh, it just would add that, that much more. And I, I was just really, and Brad, I told Brad, I said, I'm going to go talk to the council and just see if, what their feelings are on this. And I know we've talked about this before, Alex, and, uh, so, anyway, so here I am.
Yeah, I would, I would hope you'd be willing to share with us that-
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they will, yeah.
I think that'd help us take this a long way.
I just got a text from a contractor saying the same thing we're all saying. It's crazy, the hoops that the department makes you go through. I'm not going to name names, but it's crazy. So that's a contractor sitting here listening right now. So.
Thanks, Dick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Some of us attended the multicultural fair yesterday and it, it, talk about educational opportunities for our community. It, it was really good to celebrate the diversity that we have in our community. It was, it was very well done. The convention center is just a fabulous venue to, to hold those kind of events in. And it was, it was just really, really good. So I wanted to thank the city and the Human Rights Commission for sponsoring such-
Well, and the people around the convention center are doing a great job too, so don't forget them.
They are?
I don't know. That's what you were just saying.
That was the city and the Human Rights Commission.
Okay, go ahead.
They, they put it together and they did a, they did a wonderful job. Um, and we already talked about Tolerance Week, which is another great educational opportunity for everyone. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Otherwise, I'm moving to adjourn.
I'll second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.